Good evening and welcome to the Town of Victor Planning Board of Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Several announcements before we get started. Emergency exits are on both sides of the of the room. Restroom is right out the door to your immediate left. If you would be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room, even if you're a developer and are presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you with the email address and phone number for the planning department. And also on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. If you would please silence or turn off your cell phones. And please take all conversations out to the hallway and close the door if you would please. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. We're going to start with Norbit Solar. Oh, wait a minute, let me go through the approval of minutes. Do we have any? No, not tonight. We did receive some correspondence today, I believe, relative to the Lorenzo short-term rental. Keith, do you have any updates for us?
Keith Maynard, project manager for the Town of Victor. So your next planning board meeting after tonight is Wednesday, October 15th. It's Wednesday because of Columbus Day being that Monday at 7:15. New on your agenda for October 15th will be the PGA Tour Superstore, which is at 20 Cobblestone Court Drive. Applicant is requesting approval to re-demise the existing space and a new storefront, new paint and facade, and rebuild a portion of the existing truck loading pad. Construct a 5,331 square foot quick-serve restaurant. Well, it's with, I'm reading literally, probably the old Chick-fil-A, I think. So yeah, that's the in the old, the last space in the old Dick Store, next where Kmart used to be, is PGA Tour Superstore. The next new one is the day site plan, which is on Strong Road. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a single-family home and a future barn on a 56.735 acre parcel. Next would be Cheshire Ridge Preliminary and Final Subdivision. On Cheshire Ridge, applicant is requesting approval to create two new single-family lots on .74 acres along the south side of Cheshire Ridge. And then the last new item would be Cobblestone Creek Country Club Pickleball Courts, which the address is 100 Cobble Creek Drive, which is the address for the entire golf course. Applicant is requesting approval for eight gravel parking spots and the existing driveway to serve the existing pickleball courts. It's the driveway off of County Road 9 to the south of Cobble Creek Road on County Road 9. It goes back up into the golf course property. Any questions on any of that? Plus any carryovers from tonight, obviously?
Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the Norbit Solar Farm, 2 SP 2024 and 01 SU 2024 on Main Street Fishers. Applicants requesting approval to develop a 4.428 MWAC solar energy facility on 34.93 acre parcel consisting of forests and metal land. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Mike Bogacevsky with BME Associates. I think last time you guys had James Criticos from our office presenting for the last few meetings. But with me tonight from NSF is Victor Chacha also. Just a quick kind of recap. I believe last meeting, the board was able to go through the part two of the EAF and get through a lot of those seeker questions. I did see on the table that there was a draft seeker resolution. I believe that's the intent tonight. Hopefully get through, get through that. But if there is any additional questions, comments, discussion, then Victor and I are both here to help with that.
Very good. Anything from the board before we get started on the EAF?
I think, did we get started on the EAF? I think we did, right? We sort of got to the end of it and then we were...
Wes is going to pick up where we, where we left off.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything more to add to that. I'm fine.
Okay. Wes done, I guess we'll...
Okay. Yeah, thank you. As you recall, we did get through part two of the EAF last, the last meeting. So we did provide an updated part two EAF. And the only change was to question five, where we decided that yes, there is an impact on flooding, because there was a portion of the access drive that I believe down towards the, the road where it's in the floodplain. So we did indicate no or small impact there for all of those. And then also for the other impact where I mentioned a portion of the access drive is within the floodplain, that's also no or small impact. And for, for the board's consideration, there's also a part three of the EAF here, which is drafted, which identifies the seeker status as type one. We've gone through parts. You took a careful look at part one as you did, as your consultants did and, and town staff. And we've got a draft determination of significance resolution here. It's, it's several pages long. But that's, you know, based on where we've been with the site plan as of late and the modifications that have been made with regard to some buffering features and the studies that have been received by the planning board. I know that we took a close look at the, the sound levels, the sound pressure levels and the ambient noise levels at the project site and found generally that the, the sound levels at the perimeter of the site are going to be consistent with the ambient noise levels out there today. So with that, you know, I'm happy to go through. If you want me to, I can read or the, you know, the planning board chair, if you'd like to, you can read the, the resolution out loud and have a discussion on whether or not you want to move forward.
Let's tag team this because it's kind of long.
Yeah. Okay. Sure.
I don't know, I get started and I'll hand off. Does anybody on the board have any questions before we start the negative declaration?
I just wanted to add that in addition to the items that we evaluated on the part two, that if you recall, we had a moratorium on this issue in the town and we studied it quite, quite a lot of detail. And that's what's resulting in those crescent circles that you see on the drawing there. The 300-foot separation was one of the things that, from the resident, residents that resulted from that moratorium and an update of our regulations. I think additionally, the site visit over the summer to the other solar farm during an active period of time, I think that was a really good and worthwhile field trip, if you will, to see how this functions. I think that combined with the information provided by the applicant has at least allowed me to say these are small to moderate impacts, which is what that form addresses.
That's a good summary. Thank you so much. I think it captures kind of where we got to this point. Very good. Thank you. This is a draft, so keep that in mind as we go through this, folks.
Sure.
At the meeting of the Town of Victor Planning Board held on September 23rd, 25, board member, well, we'll have to do this, the moving in the, at the end. So whereas on or about February 20th, 2024, the Town of Victor Planning Board, the Planning Board received applications for special use permit and site plan approval pursuant to former Chapter 103 Energy Systems of the Town of Victor Code submitted by Norbit Solar Farms, Para NSF Victor Site 1, LLC Fishers Hollow, LLC Para, Para again together, the applicant for a plus or minus 4.43 megawatt AC solar photovoltaic, photovoltaic system, the project on a plus or minus 34.9 acre parcel located on the north side of Main Street Fishers, text map parcel 5.00-1-70.000 Para, the property within the Town of Victor's Residential 2 and Route 96/251 overlay zoning districts. Whereas the project described in the special use permit and site plan applications, together the application generally consisted of a solar panel array, including installation of approximately 11,232 anti-reflective solar panels upon fixed mounting rats, racks, 1,742 linear foot gravel access drive with hammerhead turnaround, an eight-foot-high agricultural fence surrounding the solar array with swing gate access, five utility poles, two transformers and an inverter equipment rack, and other features more fully described and depicted in the application materials, including but not limited to the civil site plan set prepared by BME Associates Project Number 2905 dated February 2024. Excuse me, comma, letter of intent from Norbit Solar Farms dated February 20th, 2024. Engineers' report prepared by BME Associates dated 16th, February 2024. Part One Full Environmental Assessment Form FEAF dated February 20th, 24. Agricultural Data Statement Signed by BME Associates dated February 2024. Glare Analysis Prepared by Stan Tech Consulting dated February 15th, 2024. Noise Assessment Prepared by Stan Tech Consulting dated February 12th, 2024. Viewshed Analysis dated February 12th, 2024. Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Prepared by BME Associates dated February, there's no day?
Yeah, there, there wasn't a day, a date on the, on the SWIP. It was just dated February. Very good.
Decommissioning Plan and Draft Decommissioning Agreement Prepared by Norbit Solar Farms and Site Plan and Special Use Permit Application Forms Signed by Norbit Solar Farms dated February 20th, 2024. Whereas Town of Victor Planning and Building Department staff reviewed the application materials and determined the application to be complete for review in accordance with Chapter 211 of the Victor Town Code, and on behalf of the Planning Board referred the application to the Ontario County Planning Board pursuant to general municipal law, Section 239-M, on or about February 28th, 2024. Whereas the Planning Board opened a public hearing on the application at the March 12th, 2024 Planning Board meeting, where the applicant appeared before the Planning Board, presented their project, received comments from the Planning Board, the Town Highway Department, Fire Marshal Conservation Board, Town Landscape Consultant Code Enforcement Officer, and the public, that included verbal comments expressed at the public hearing and written communication. Whereas the State Environmental Quality Review Act, ECL Article 8 and its implementing regulation six NYCRR Part 617 collectively seeker, require that no agency shall carry out, fund, or approve an action until it has completed the requirements of seeker. Whereas the Planning Board, having reviewed the application at the March 12th, 24 Planning Board meeting, adopted a resolution declaring the Planning Board's intent to be seeker lead agency. And whereas on or about March 12th, 2024, following adoption of the lead agency coordination resolution and is directed by the Planning Board, town staff sent notices of the Planning Board's commencement of a coordinated review of the project and its intent to be lead agency for the project to all potentially involved and interested in agencies, including the Town of Victor Town Board, New York State Environmental Research and Development Authority, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Region 8, NYSS Department of Health, NYSS Throughway Authority, NYSS Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation, Ontario County IDA, Ontario County Planning Board, Ontario County Department of Public Works, US Court of Engineers, and the Town Amendment. Want to pick up from here, Wes?
Sure thing. Whereas responses to the lead agency coordination transmittals indicating no objection to the Planning Board serving as lead agency for the project were received from the Ontario County IDA, Ontario County Department of Public Works, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and New York State Department of Health. And whereas the Planning Board did not receive any objection to the lead agency coordination request within 30 calendar days from the date that the lead agency notification was sent to all interested and involved agencies. Whereas the Town Engineering Consultant Labella Associates provided written comments on the application on April 17th, 2024. And whereas on March 25th, 2024, the Victor Town Board opened a public hearing on a proposed local law imposing a six-month moratorium on the review, approval, permitting, and/or construction of large-scale solar energy systems in the Town of Victor, and said public hearing was closed on April 8th, 2024. And on April 22nd, 2024, the Town Board passed Local Law Number 5 of 2024 that imposed a six-month moratorium on the review, approval, permitting, and construction of large-scale solar energy systems in the Town of Victor. And whereas on September 23rd, 2024, the Town Board held a public hearing to allow for extending the Town of Victor's six-month moratorium on the review, approval, permitting, and/or construction of large-scale solar energy systems in the Town of Victor. And on October 15th, 2024, the Town Board passed Resolution Number 208 of 2024, extending the six-month moratorium on the review, approval, permitting, and/or construction of large-scale solar energy systems in the Town of Victor. And whereas on December 16th, 2024, the Town Board held a public hearing on proposed changes to the Victor Town Code to amend and/or repeal Article, or Chapter, I'm sorry, Chapter 103, Article 1, solar photovoltaic systems and facilities within the town. And on February 10th, 2025, the Town Board adopted Local Law Number 2, 2025, Large-Scale Solar Code Updates, and amended Chapter 211 zoning, repeal Chapter 103 Energy Systems, and affirm the end of a temporary land use moratorium within the Town of Victor, parentheses, the new solar law. And whereas on or about May 5th, 2025, the Planning Board received revised site plan and special use permit applications, together the revised application from the applicant for the project in response to the town's adoption of the new solar law, Article 6 of Chapter 211, Solar Photovoltaic Systems of the Victor Town Code, where said submission of revised application included a May 5th, 2025 Letter of Intent Engineers' Report dated May 2nd, 2025, which included information, including but not limited to a description of onsite soil conditions, the design details of the proposed stormwater management facility, stormwater quantity and quality calculations and analysis, a letter from the New York State Historic Preservation Office, and information from the New York State Natural Heritage Program. Further, the revised application included a civil site plan drawing set prepared by BME Associates, last revised April 30th, 2025, drawings 1 through 13. Site Plan Application Form and Special Use Permit Application Form dated May 5th, 2025. Revised Part 1 FEAF, or the Revised FEAF dated May 5th, 2025. Glare Hazard Analysis dated May 1st, 2025. And Noise Assessment dated May 1st, 2025. Viewshed Analysis dated April 2025. Revised Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan dated May 2025. Agricultural Data Statement dated April 28th, 2025. And Written Narrative Responding to the Town of Victor's Legal Standards Set Forth in Section 211-9 and 211-31 of the Victor Town Code.
Whereas the revised application would allow for construction of a plus or minus 4.43 megawatt AC solar photovoltaic system on a aforementioned plus or minus 34.9 acre parcel located on the north side of Main Street Fishers, text map parcel 5.00-1-70.000, the property within the Town of Victor's Residential 2 zoning district and within the town's large-scale solar system overlay district. Whereas the Town Amendment was notified of the Planning Board's receipt of the revised application pursuant to GML Section 239NN, and the Town of Victor, Victor transmitted copy of the revised application with a May 12th, 2025 cover letter. Whereas the town staff reviewed the revised application materials and determined the revised application to be complete for review in accordance with Chapter 211 of the Victor Town Code, including but not limited to Selection 211-62 Paragraph C of the Victor Town Code. And on behalf of the Planning Board referred the application to the Ontario County Planning Board pursuant to GML Section 239-M, on or about May 21st, 2025. Whereas the Planning Board opened a public hearing on the revised application at the June 10th, 2025 Planning Board meeting, where the applicant appeared before the Planning Board and presented their project, received comments from the Planning Board, Fire Marshal Conservation Board, Town Landscape Consultant Code Enforcement Officer, Town Highway Department, Town Amendment, and the public, that included verbal comments expressed at the public hearing and written communication. Whereas the Planning Board caused town staff to prepare and to distribute a seeker lead agency courtesy memorandum to notify involved and interested agencies that the Planning Board had received a revised application, and town staff transmitted, transmitted a memorandum dated June 17th, 2025, along with the Revised FEAF and site layout graphic despite depicting the general layout changes from the 2024 submission. Whereas in addition to comments provided at the June 10th, 2025 Planning Board meeting from town staff and town consultants, reviewer comments on the revised application were also provided by the New York State DEC on July 1st, 2025, the Ontario County Planning Board on July 9th, 2025, and the town's engineering consultant, Labella Associates, on July 15th, 2025. Whereas in response to the various comments on the revised application provided by the Planning Board, the public, and various involved and interested agencies, and town consultants, the applicant submitted supplemental information to the Planning Board responding to said comments that included a June 9th, 2025 letter from BME Associates, a photo key and photos depicting the view from the project site towards the southeast where a single-family residence is located, received by the town on June 9th, 2025. Response to the Fire Marshal comments from BME Associates, including fire exhibit drawings depicting a 20-foot-wide perimeter access and a 20-foot-wide north-south access pass, as well as other features dated June 16th, 2025. Visualization photo key and photo simulations of the proposed utility poles near the driveway access to Main Street Fishers dated July 3rd, 2025. A slope exhibit drawing dated July 16th, 2025. An ambient sound survey dated July 15th, 2025, prepared by Stan Tech. A BME letter dated July 17th, 2025, responding to Labella Associates comments, including attachment of the ZN Shine Solar Panel specification sheet and updated civil site plan last revised July 16th, 2025. A glare study exhibit identifying observation points reviewed in the glare hazard analysis. A cross-section exhibit prepared by BME Associates dated July 18th, 2025, depicting various views of the project from the residential home to the southeast. An updated decommissioning plan and decommissioning cost estimate last revised July 22nd, 2025. A tree clearing exhibit prepared by BME Associates last revised August 8th, 2025, as well as an accompanying tree inventory analysis prepared by Davy Resource Group. A supplemental graph to the glare study received by the Planning Board on or about August 12th, 25, depicting the time of days within the calendar year within which the green and yellow glare would be expected to impact the neighboring residential home to the southeast of the project site where there was no existing or proposed screening of the solar panels, and an operations and maintenance plan dated September 5th, 2025. Whereas the public hearing for the revised application was held open from June 10th, 2025, to afford the public the opportunity to review and comment on the revised application and subsequent submission material, submission material provided by the applicant. And the Planning Board closed the public hearing on August 12th, 2025. Whereas on or about July 9th, 2025, the Ontario County Planning Board, having received a referral of the revised application pursuant to general municipal law, Section 239-M, provided its comments on the revised application to the board consisting of the following. One, the referring board should consider requiring a landscaping agreement as a condition of approval in order to assure vegetation and landscaping continues to be maintained after development. And second, this is application referred to Monroe County as required by general municipal law, Section 239. Whereas it's a request of the Planning Board, the Town Engineer has prepared Part Two of the EAF, as well as Part Three of the EAF for the Planning Board's consideration. Wes, could you pick up?
Sure thing. Whereas with the assistance of its consultants, including the Town Engineer and Town Staff, the Planning Board has carefully examined the Revised FEAF, the Revised Application, all materials accompanying the Revised Application, and all other materials related thereto, including information and comments offered at its meetings. Now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board hereby affirms its status as lead agency and affirms classification of the project as a type-one action. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves Part Two of the EAF as attached heretofore. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board has evaluated the Revised Application and the long environmental assessment form using the criteria for determining significance identified in 6 NYCRR Section 617.7C1, and in accordance with 6 NYCRR Section 617.7C2 and 3, using said Part Two of the EAF, and finds that although potential environmental impacts were identified, none of the impacts were found to be significant. And be it further resolved that, therefore, the Planning Board finds that the Revised Application and related project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact, and the Planning Board hereby issues a negative declaration of environmental significance as indicated in the attached seeker full environmental assessment form, Part Three, and evaluation of the magnitude and importance of impacts and determination of significance. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board's adoption of the negative declaration has been prepared in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York and implemented under 6 NYCRR Part 617. And be it further resolved that notice of this resolution and notice of negative declaration shall be filed to the extent required by the applicable regulations under seeker and/or any other relevant statute or regulation. And be it further resolved, the Chair of the Planning Board be and hereby is authorized to execute further documents that may be required to complete the issuance of the negative declaration herein.
Thanks for the help, Wes. Any comments?
Very thorough.
Okay. So at, at this juncture, then, we're ready for a motion to approve adoption of the resolution?
I'll move it.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The three zero? So far, so good. So I have a note here, then, that the decommissioning plan is at the Town Board, and we can't do any further decisions on the site plan until the Town Board's taken action on the decommission.
Right, that's the way we understand it, too. And we did attend the Town Board last night to review the decommissioning plan. With the Town Board getting any comments, there was some discussion comments that we received from Wes at Labella and a couple from the Town Board. So I know NSF's going to work on addressing those comments and making sure to make any revisions to the decommissioning plan estimate. That, that was basically the crux of the comments last night. And then, so that way we can get back forward to Town Board and get that taken care of. So we understand that's the next step.
Very good. All right. I think that's, we're good for tonight, then.
Awesome. Thank you very much, everybody.
Yep. Thank you. Sure. Sure. You good? So the next item on the agenda, then, is Wilkinson Fence. And this is 25 SP 2025 at 439 Fisher Road. The owner is Marcus Wilkinson. Applicants requesting approval to install a four-foot-high fence along the perimeter of his property. Good evening. Tell us what you're doing.
Yeah, so the proposed fence will run, I don't know if you have the site plan?
There's a, a little laser pointer on the desk there.
Perfect. So the proposed fence will be of wood and metal construction along this 57-foot run. Being that it's in the, between the front edge of the property and the road, I did require a variance, which was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The remaining fence will be a black-coated, four-foot-tall chain link, and will basically wrap around, touching the corner of the accessory shed here, and then back to the house. Majority of the fence will be shielded from the road and from the neighboring property by these existing hedges. And one of the terms of the variance was that these hedges are to be maintained as they are.
Will you be maintaining those screening, that screening vegetation?
Yes. Yep.
Have any questions, Al?
No, it seems very straightforward. I have no issue.
Was this the one where there was an encroachment or something like that? No?
Mm-mm.
I must have gotten it mixed up with another one. I don't, I don't have any comments.
And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public that would like some, make some comments or observations? If that's the case, then I'd motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have a, a resolution prepared. Date, today's date, 9/26, 2025, 9/23, right? Application number 25 SP 2025 for Wilkinson Fence at 439 Fisher Road. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings of fact. First, the site plan application was received on August 19th from Marcus Wilkinson by the Secretary of the Planning Board for a site entitled Wilkinson Fence. It's the intent of the applicant to construct a four-foot-high fence along the perimeter of the property within the limited development district. A public hearing was duly called for and published in the Daily Messenger whereby all property owners within a minimum of 500 feet of the application were notified by US Mail and an under-review sign was posted on the subject parcel as retired by pound code. Planning Board held a public hearing on September 23rd, 2025, at which time the public was permitted to speak on their application. The application was deemed to be a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act regulations and classifications as such conclude seeker. Quality Review Act regulations and classifications, as such concludes Seeker. The Town of Victor Code Enforcement Officer reviewed the site plan in a letter dated September 11th, 2025, and provided comments. Application has received an area variance on September 15th, 2025, from the Zoning Board of Appeals to install a four-foot-high fence along the property line 52.2 feet forward of the front line of their home. It will be approximately 33 feet from the pavement edge of Fisher's Road. Now therefore be resolved that the application of Marcus Wilkinson, site plan entitled Wilkinson Fence, located in a limited development district, received by the Planning Board August 19th, 2025. Planning Board application number 25 SP 2025 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the Chairman's signature, that no final signatures will be given on the plan until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25th, 1996. And the ongoing conclusions, first, that the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Second, that the applicant comply with the following Zoning Board of Appeals variances and conditions granted on September 15th, 2025. A, that the fence will be a minimum of four feet in height, and B, of a box, wire, or chain link construction, and B, all existing vegetation buffering between the fence and Fisher Road shall remain and be maintained or replanted should anything die or be lost from disease. And third, that a building permit be obtained for the fence prior to construction. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board's secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. I need a motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And then we're gonna do a change to the agenda. We're gonna move the Lomenzo Short-Term Rental Special Use ahead of the Chick-fil-A. And... What did I do with it? Oh, there it is. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, hi.
Will you tell us, introduce yourself and tell us what?
Daniel Lomenzo, it's my wife, Ju. Yep, we live on Red Fox Run in Victor.
And tell us a little about the property and?
Oh, okay, so we've lived on Red Fox Run for 24 years, and we are retired, and all of our kids are off and gone. We're basically a, an empty house, except for my wife, myself, and my sister-in-law, who lives with us six months out of the year. And we opted a couple of years ago in order to create some income, so we could actually stay on Red Fox Run. We, it was suggested to us that we start up a guest rental operation, which is what we've been doing, and despite some of these comments that I see, which I find to be not only insulting, but just so, so unaccounted for, if I take a look at what was presented to me in terms of what the requirements are, we fit every one of them. Let me just give you a couple pointers here. First of all, the police have never been on our property in 24 years. That's number one. Number two, we've never gotten any complaints from any of our neighbors in any way whatsoever. Sound level, there is no level. As a matter of fact, I brought for your observation, if you want. You can all. Many that are listed there are required in here. There is not one item in this declaration, if you will, that we are not abiding by, and I find it remarkable that our neighbors are complaining about noise or whatever, because there is none. As a matter of fact, when Joe Giorgio came over to our house to do the initial inspection, he said, "My God, you've got more activity next door than you do here times whatever." We have, it's, oh, first of all, when you're doing a guest rental, you are reviewed by your guests, and if you take a look at our record, it's to be envied frankly. And there is nothing that we have done in our neighborhood to cause any sort of this nonsense that they're talking about. In fact, I could certainly turn this around frankly on many of them with the noise factor, with the parking factor. I just find it to be ludicrous frankly. So the fact is, the reason that I'm here now and not two years ago is honestly, I was not aware that there was a special use permit that was required. Airbnb basically makes us as hosts act as if they're taking care of everything, which they do. They pay all the fees, they take care of everything. I had no idea whatsoever that there was one that was required, and certainly I would have applied for it had I known at the beginning. We just, honestly, it was just an oversight on our part, and that's why I'm here to make things, put things above board.
Very good.
I guess the question I have is, what are the town's regulations concerning short-term rentals? What is it that he is required to do in order to obtain?
There's a, there's a quick list here, and this is, you're gonna be present when the, when your guests are there, is that correct?
Oh, it's on premise. That's, that's an absolute prerequisite.
Okay.
We live there, yes. And there, by the way, the diagram that our neighbors sent is incorrect. It's where the, and Joe and whoever the other officer, when they came to inspect and found everything to be terrific, except two small things, it's not anywhere's near what the diagram is showing.
The copy of the code does, does show quite a, quite a list of the actual requirements relative to a lot of the points that the gentleman's addressed already.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, Al? While?
No, I think that was my primary question, was if this was your principal residence, like where do you go when you rent it out, but you stay on premise?
We are there all the time, yes. As I mentioned at the beginning of this conversation, myself, my wife, my sister-in-law's with us just six months out of the year, but we live there, we're retired, yes.
Okay, that's the only question I had.
And I'm just pulling up the code comments here. The, yeah, the code enforcement folks indicate that there are no, are no issues. The following, it appears that everything is copacetic in terms of what the code requires.
New smoke alarms and a motion sensor light out, what is a secondary entrance exit that I've purchased, which is just a matter of me installing, that I've, and Joe's aware of all this, I've told him that, take care of this, because I know they're coming back to do another inspection.
You have an inspection report in your hands there that they?
All, all it does indicate is that a short list of corrections was provided to the applicant, and they're, they're good to go with code.
Okay.
Yeah, Adam got back to me, he's the one who was the code officer on this, and he did get back to me that his response to comments were all addressed, and he was good. But he does have another home inspection with Joe Georgia. That is for like number four.
And is the special use permit renewed periodically then? Or is it?
One year, he has to come back in one.
One year or three years, I think I saw something like that, yeah.
And, and I guess I noticed here in the code, it says that the permit can be revoked if there's fraud, misrepresentation, or false statements, and I don't believe that you've made any of those tonight to us, and I tend to agree with what you're saying. I have no more comments.
And we did receive copies of the letter that you, that you referred to, and it says a public hearing, so at this point, if, if there's members of the public that would like to speak, please come up. Yes, sir. If you would make space for him, sir, at the podium. If you would just introduce yourself with your name and address, please.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jason Rama, I live at 1222 Red Fox Run, and so I wrote this letter this afternoon. I'm here as a husband and father. I'm here on behalf of my two young children and my wife. And when we got the postcard, first of all, two years ago, my sister from Connecticut came up to visit us, and she said, "Hey, did you know there's an Airbnb up the street?" And I said, "No, I didn't know that." And I looked, and there was. So the question is, and first of all, my, my goal here, to both of you, and you guys, I've been living on this street for?
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to talk. No, 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 I, I can't hear anything if you don't talk.
I'm sorry. So I've been living in this home for 18 years. Mr. and Mrs. Lomenzo have been living there in their home longer than that. They're wonderful neighbors, and I hope they would say the same about me. There are some folks on the street who probably, we would both agree, are not the best neighbors. My concern is just again, because of my wife and kids. So I hope that maybe we can have some conditions here that, that might be agreeable. I'm extremely concerned that this Airbnb has been operating for however many, two years, one year, I don't know what, when my sister told me about it, without approval. I think it's disrespectful to this process, it's disrespectful to all of you guys to ignore the rules. We all know that there are requirements for getting approvals. That's okay, people make mistakes, it might not have been intentional, totally fine. I just, it's a concern, and I didn't know, Mr. Lomenzo shared just now his, his feedback and background of that reason. I think that that's fine. People make mistakes, it's okay, in my opinion. The other thing that's the biggest concern of mine, the noise concern, there's no noise concern. It's very minimal, may not even be coming from them. Traffic, we have other neighbors who have, where there's a real problem with parking, literally parking their entire cars on our lawn. Parking is a problem occasionally, they're not to blame for that, and they have a special parking spot on their driveway for guests, for the Airbnb. My number one biggest concern that I want to share with the board tonight is that, and this is a direct appeal to the public health, safety, and welfare of the folks on our street, introducing a constant flow of unvetted transient individuals into a residential area compromises neighborhood security. My seven-year-old daughter was, as I drove home tonight, and I obeyed the speed limit minus 10 miles an hour, driving five miles an hour on the street, was riding her scooter up the street by herself. She knows she's not supposed to do that. Again, she's seven. I said, "Caroline, please don't do that." How do we know that guests are going to understand that the speed limit is, I think, 15? I don't even know what it is, but I drive five miles an hour on the street. When we have people who are transient visitors, there's a major concern for the safety of children that are on the street. That's the number one concern that my wife and my kids are very concerned about as well. If there's a proposed solution, I'm more than happy to discuss, I'm not here to contest with you guys at all. Please, let's come up with a plan, or an idea, a condition, something, and I will tear this letter up. I wrote this today to get attention from you and you, and, and I thank you for your time, I don't need to talk about it anymore. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have, but that's, my big concern is the safety for the kids.
Appreciate your input, and I think Mr. Lomenzo may have a response to that?
Sure.
Yeah, come on, Al.
Thank you. Yeah, Jason, no problem. I think you're gonna like this. So we have another Airbnb up in the Adirondack, a very small place, and there's other people on the road, and I, we have signs up 10 miles an hour, and everybody that comes to stay is told, everybody's watching, so you better make sure you drive 10 miles an hour. So whatever speed limit that you would propose, or anybody else would propose, I'm, I'm all over that. I can tell you right now that I'll be happy to put in the description, as I've had to do about there being stairs at our place, some people were missing that, that please keep your speed limit at 10 miles an hour. The interesting thing, and you know this, my neighbor right next door doesn't go 10 miles an hour. They've got their kids in the street going crazy with these motorized things, and, you know, I'm looking at it like, their kids, let them go ahead. I understand fully, I would be concerned, I will make that addition, and you can check me on it by going online and looking, looking at our listing.
And I would actually, if I may, suggest expanding on that a little bit to state maybe that it's, it's, it's a quiet residential area with young families?
Yeah.
And children, please be aware of the children and keep the speed to 10 or whatever.
No question, yeah. I, I think that's a reasonable, and actually, I think it's a great thing to just add to it to make sure, but as I say, there's people that are residents on the road that are not following really what they should be doing, and I come around the corner, and as soon as I see something, I'm crawling, because...
I'm over there too. My niece, my niece lives there, so I know the street, so.
Okay, good. So, solved.
Issue solved, yeah.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
I'm pleased that we can talk to each other, that's very nice.
Pretty remarkable, right?
It's pretty cool. Yes, sir. Very good. Anybody else from the public have any comments or observations? Then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if that's the case, then I do have a resolution prepared.
Okay.
So this is Lomenzo Short-Term Rental at 1227 Red Fox Run, today's date, 09SU2025, whereas the planning board made the following findings of fact. First, a special use permit application was received on 30 July 2025 from Daniel Lomenzo, the applicant by the Secretary of the Planning Board, entire Lomenzo Short-Term Rental, the project. Second, it's the intention of the applicant to allow a host short-term rental at 1227 Red Fox Run. A public hearing was duly called for and was published in the Daily Messenger, and whereby all property owners within a minimum of 500 feet of the application were notified by US Mail, and under review sign was posted on the subject parcel as required by town code. Fourth, the planning board held a public hearing on September 23rd, 2025, at which time the public was permitted to speak on their application. The proposed use is designed and located to be operated such that public health, safety, and welfare and convenience are protected. Sixth, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. Seven, the proposed use conforms to all applicable regulations in the district which it is located. Eighth, the Town of Victor Code Enforcement Officer reviewed the special use permit application in a letter dated 10 September 2025, and provided comments. On 10 September 25, a site visit was conducted to the rental property, and provided the applicant with a list of items in need of correction to become in compliance with the Uniform Code of New York State. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Danny Lomenzo for a special use permit received by the Planning Board July 30th, 25, Planning Board application number 09SU2025 be approved with the following conditions. The conditions to be addressed prior to the Chairman's signature on the site plan is first, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25th, 1996. Second, that comments from the Code Enforcement Officer dated 10 September 25 be addressed. And then the ongoing conditions, first, that an annual certification be submitted to the Planning and Building Department naming the agent of the property. Second, that an annual fire inspection be submitted to the Planning and Building Department. Third, that the special use permit issued shall be valid for one year from the date of issuance, subject to subsequent renewal periods of one year to three years at the discretion of the Planning Board. And fourth, that the special use permit approval be rescinded within 10 days of the filing of a formal complaint to the Code Enforcement Officer if said complaint is not resolved within that 10-day period. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board's secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Just a quick, quick, quick point of clarification, on, under the conditions, you know, it says, addressed prior to the Chairman's signature on the site plan, that should probably be a special use permit versus a site plan, we don't, or do we have a plan?
Oh, you're right, okay, so, yeah. We'll amend that as?
And, and number one, it also mentions plan, and that should be a special use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So you guys still good with your motions?
Yeah, I am, and I just want to reiterate, those ongoing conditions do provide guardrails, right, on ongoing compliance, so if there are issues, they can be addressed.
Very good.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three-zero. Right, gentlemen.
So what's next? But where do we go with this? I don't, I'm sorry, I've never done this before.
That's okay.
I believe you're setting up an inspection with Joe?
Yes.
He needs to come back and do a site.
I'll let him know when everything is in place?
Yep.
And then we can kind of go from there.
So call our office when you're ready for that.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll go from there.
Great, okay, thanks everyone. Yep, thanks.
Have a good evening.
I appreciate you listening. No problem. Thank you. Bye. All right.
Okay, so Chick-fil-A is next, right?
Yep.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the Chick-fil-A Restaurant. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the Chick-fil-A Restaurant, zero-six SP two-zero-two, at one hundred to, one thousand to one twenty East View Mall Drive. The applicant's requesting approval to construct a fifty-three thirty-one square foot quick-serve restaurant with a double lane, drive-through, and outdoor patio. This project is proposed on a one dot ninety-six acre portion of land as the East View Mall parcel at the southeast corner. Evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, you?
Good. My name's Charles Gottlieb. I'm the Land Use Counsel from Whitman Osterman in Hannah in Albany, New York, here on behalf of Chick-fil-A. I'm here with project engineer from Bowler Engineering, Randy Bebaut, and we are here for an approximately 5,397 square foot Chick-fil-A at the East View Mall. I think it's at the southeastern corner of the East View Mall. We were last before this board in, at your August meeting, where the planning board declared its intent to be the secret lead agency circulated to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they consented to this board acting as the lead agency for secret review. Since we were before you in August, we have been to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the requested area variances. We need, we have seven requested area variances in front of the ZBA right now. We presented to the ZBA. We will be responding to the ZBA by the end of this week. We do, in, in working with the ZBA and obtaining some of their comments, we do expect to eliminate some of those variances. There were no real substantial issues from the ZBA other than, than signage. So we are taking a look at decreasing some of the signages and the variances that were requested there. We're also going to find a different way to light the American flag, other than a floodlight, and we are also looking at different ways we can add sprinklers under the canopies as the code requires. The ZBA did not take any significant issue with the meal delivery canopy, that is at the eastern portion of the, oh, wait, I have one of these. The meal delivery canopy that's at the eastern portion, or the fence that is above the retaining wall in this location. We did recently respond to planning board comments that we've received to date on September 17th. That was a response to comment memo from Bowler Engineering, a revised site plan sheet with some changes to the traffic patterns near the drive-through exit, which was a comment from the planning board chair at the last meeting, and a revised landscape plan. To date, we have responded to all comments that the planning board has had and the planning board's consultants have provided. Architecture remains consistent with what was previously proposed. It's enhanced at the planning board's request. We ask now at this time that the planning board start the secret review process with going through part two of the EAF and considering a negative declaration. Just to remind the planning board, in our record, we do have a revised EAF, lighting specs, full site plan sheets, a water and sewer engineering report from Bowler Engineering, a storm water pollution prevention plan, a geotechnical report, and a traffic impact study that was accepted and agreed to by the New York State Department of Transportation. So the record appears to be complete for the planning board to start the secret process, but we're here to answer any questions.
And Wes is prepared to start part two and part three, but any questions from the board first before we get going?
I don't have any questions, no. Not yet.
Len, if you're ready, Wes.
Yeah, I can get going on this. So the other thing that you haven't received yet, and I don't think there's going to be any showstoppers, are town engineer comments, right? So we have gone through, and I know you've been requesting our comments. We have gone through, and the number of comments that we had previously, you have addressed. You've done a good job at addressing our previous comments. One of the findings that we have right at this, right at this point, which will be in our letter, we'll have that to you by the end of this week, is the geotechnical reports, and I'm not looking for a response here tonight, but just for your consideration. Geotechnical report indicates that, however, the results of the subsurface investigation did not identify conditions indicative of an elevated risk for sinkhole development, provided storm water or other infiltration systems are not utilized at the site. But the project plans appear to call for an underground infiltration detention system, some chambers under the, under the pavement, which contradicts the geotechnical report. So we'll want to maybe just address how that's, how that's going to be resolved. And then there are several trees slated to remain on that, I guess I'll call it the south, the southeast side of the, of the, of the project, between the limits of the disturbance, to be within the limits of disturbance. And the applicant, we just want you to verify that tho, those trees will not be impacted during construction. We might want to look at the drip line of those trees, just to assure that they won't be damaged, like the root system wouldn't be damaged beyond repair and result in the loss of those trees. So that's, that's it for this point. But we do have, we did, we did go through your part one of your revised EAF, received honor about August 20th or August 22nd of 2025. Thank you for the updated EAF, that was helpful, which considers not only the, the site plan, well, considers the site plan and the construction of the Chick-fil-A, but also the proposed amendment to the no-build area. So in, in front of the planning, in front of you, planning board members, you've got part two of the EAF, and I don't know that we need to go through this in, in too, too great a detail, this full EAF part two, but I'll start off with number one, impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. The obvious answer to that is yes. The majority of the site has been constructed on previously. They are going into some of the existing green space area, which likely has been disturbed at some point in the past as well. So I've got no or small impact for all of the sub, sub-questions there. Number two, impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. I've indicated no in that regard. Impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Example, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. Although I have checked yes here for your consideration, really what the impact is to are, is an existing storm water pond on the other side of the mall, right? It's a, it's a large infiltration basin. There are no natural water bodies or wetlands that are going to be impacted. So no or small impact in that regard. Impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. We've indicated no. Number five, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding. I've indicated no here. Number six, impact on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. So maybe during construction, right? I, we do expect that construction vehicles would have an impact on, on air, especially with their emissions, but no or small impact for each of the subcategories.
And any, any cooking things coming out of the vents don't really fall under this characteristic, or?
Well, it's, it's an interesting question, and we did ask them about, about that in the previous, in our previous comment letter, and I think the response was that the, the equipment that's used, I think we've talked about the same sort of issue over at Victor, Victor Crossing, I think it is, and the aromas, the smells that might come from cooking, and I guess that's probably not a state-regulated air emission.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will say, there, Chick-fil-A is unique in that they use pressure cookers to cook, and there's, you know, HVAC and vents. So it's not like when you drive by Burger King and they want, they want you to smell that aroma. The pressure cookers ensure that there's no scent outside the building.
Appreciate that.
That's helpful.
That's not the first time I've answered that question.
Yeah. All right. Impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. I've checked yes here. It's just, it's just a green space there. There's going to be some loss of lawn, some, a couple, a few, I shouldn't say a couple. There, there are several trees that will be removed to accommodate the, the development. No or small impact for each of the impacts on plants and animals. Impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. I've indicated no in that regard. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. I've indicated no in that regard. Number 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. I've also indicated no for question 10. Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Again, we've indicated no in this regard. Number 12, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. Again, the answer here is no. There are no DEC-defined critical environmental areas in the town of Victor. Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. So here, for your consideration, I've checked no, but again, this is, this is your form. We do have the, the traffic study and, and a response from DOT indicating there's not, there's not going to be a significant detrimental effect to the community.
And the applicant's revised plan does, does improve the traffic flow from the original design, doesn't it?
Yes. Yes, it does.
I, I think there's a traffic impact. I think it's an internal traffic impact, and I agree that if I were the DOT, I would look at this and say, yeah, there's not really an impact to us out on the state highway, but I, I think, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm a creature of this area of the town. I've driven through here hundreds of times before. Intuitively, I, I know there's going to be an impact from this project. Do I think it's going to be detrimental? No, I, I don't really think so. Most of the time during the year, I think over the holidays, Christmas time, it'll be interesting to see how it functions, but I think there is an impact.
Okay.
I'll just add that part of our traffic mitigation, and the DOT had agreed to this, there will be some automatic signal timing changes for the intersection that you, the south of the project site. So that'll be handled just automatically by DOT in coordination with the project.
Yeah. So to, back, back to your point, do you think then that we should characterize this as yes with maybe the proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods?
I think it will.
It's, it's still a small or no.
I think it's a small to moderate impact, as we, I don't think it's a large impact, but I think, I think it's an impact.
It should be noted, though.
I think it should be noted, yeah.
Yeah, you're good. I agree. That's a good point, Scott. Okay.
Yeah, I think there's internal and external traffic to talk about here with this project. I think the benefit to East View Mall versus, say, other plazas around 96 is you have three, four entrances to this site, you know, which is really the saving grace, I think, for this project.
Just out of curiosity, with your comments about the DOT, will, will they be looking at this intersection and timing as well?
So they looked at both intersections. From what I understand, it's that southern intersection with East View Mall Drive, that they'll be monitored for signal timing.
I noticed they've done some playing with it already, that the, the left turn out of, coming this way towards the thruway is already, there's a left turn arrow and timing, so they're already doing some tweaks up there.
Yeah, and from what I understand, with signal timings and modems, the DOT is pretty much constantly monitoring these, and they have the ability to change signal timing kind of at their leisure.
Great. I'm sure they'll be on top of it, because especially when we open a new restaurant, there's going to be a lot of interest, I'm sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I guess I just have one more question relative to traffic, and I guess it sort of ties in with parking, because it looks to me like the parking is on the other side of this road to be constructed, and my, my question is, if, if parking is exceeded from what you show there, is parking available to customers then to park in another aisle further to the north? Is that permissible, or do you have-
Yes, yeah.
-dibs on parking spaces, or doesn't it really matter?
Nope, shared parking throughout the, you know, from what you see here, the new row of parking will be installed here, and this will all be shared parking. The idea being, when you, when you go back through the historical imagery of this specific area, these parking spots are pretty underutilized, and we didn't want to pull the building in further to the lot, because as you pull it in further, closer to the mall, those parking spaces are typically utilized. There is cross parking.
I, I see that. I think that's good. I have one more question related to parking. I notice on your plans that you have parking stalls that are nine feet wide, and you have parking stalls that are eight feet wide. Why do you have some that are eight and some that are nine?
That sounds like an engineer's question.
The eight feet wide are probably the ADA spaces, which by code they can be eight feet wide.
I'm looking at, hang on a second.
Unless there's a, a bad dimension somewheres, but I'm fairly confident that our spaces are nine.
I'm, I'm familiar with the, the landing area being typically eight foot. Well, maybe I'll just ask you to take a look at it, because I'm looking at, looking at some items here on your plan, and I don't want to sidetrack the meeting here, but I found it interesting that we had some eight foot and nine foot, and I thought to myself, how do I know when I'm driving in Chick-fil-A whether I need to choose an eight-foot wide parking stall or a nine-foot wide parking stall?
Certainly not the intent, so I will, we will take a look at that.
Okay.
Back to you, Wes.
All right. Number fourteen. Okay, number fourteen, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of energy of any form. I think the logical answer here is, is yes, right? They're going to be using energy, electricity, maybe some gas. But each of the, each of the subcategories I've got indicated no or, or small impact. Has there been any communication with utility providers, and have they provided any, any feedback on the project?
So we've made application for electric and gas. We're just, actually just initiated that fairly recently. Water is private, and sewer, we've coordinated with the town of Farmington, we've got their comments.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape on utilities.
Okay. Impact on noise, odor, and light. So this, this gets to your question about the kitchen aromas.
Mm-hmm.
Proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. I've indicated yes here. So I guess, I guess with noise, we know there's going to be an increase in noise during construction, maybe even operation as well, right? But it's, it's already a busy location. You're right next to 96. There's mall traffic. I don't, I don't know that there's going to be any objectionable noise creation there. Odors, I think, I think we heard the, the applicant's representative talk a little to that. And then lighting, it sounds like they may be changing the proposal for illuminating the, the flag, and as far as, as far as we can tell so far with the lighting plan, what they're, what they're showing is not out of character with the neighborhood. So I've got no or small impact with noise, odor, and light.
I would agree.
Okay. Number sixteen, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to newer existing sources of contaminants. Answer to that is no. Consistency with community plan. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. The answer to that is no. It's generally consistent. It's consistent with the, the, the base zoning district as well as the overlay zoning districts. Number eighteen, consistency with community character. The proposed action, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character, and I think the answer to that is also no.
So a question, Wes. Where would potential impacts on sanitary sewer system? Didn't see a really category that neatly addressed that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just think that's one we always have to consider.
Yep. And I know we've come across that in other projects, and-
Did we get into that with the hotel?
Yes.
Hotel application?
Yes, and we haven't gone through secret yet on the hotel project.
Right.
But you're right.
But it came up as a discussion item, as I recall. And, and maybe, I think during that project, upgrades were spoken about.
Yes, so that, that's under number seventeen, consistency with community plans, right? The proposed action may cause a change in-
What about sixteen?
Also number four.
Each. Or was it, was it, disposal processing, solid waste, I, sixteen, I?
Well, that would, that would likely be not necessarily sanitary sewer. It would be solid waste, like-
Okay. Okay. So somewhere we just need to flag that and put that issue to make sure it's addressed appropriately.
Okay. Yeah, so 17E, the proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is not, or is distant from existing infrastructure. And you mentioned number four, impact on groundwater. So I would say for impact on groundwater, that might be the case for onsite wastewater septic systems, but maybe not for connection to a public sewer.
Right.
Unless the project was actually at the wastewater, you know, maybe a new wastewater treatment plant that would have a discharge into either a water body or groundwater.
Yeah, I don't think we have a groundwater issue. It sounds like based on what you mentioned about the geotech, maybe some concern about soil movement relative to infiltration, but...
Yep.
And I don't understand...
Yes.
Right. Yeah, no, but that's actually what makes Eastview kind of a nice site because all the stormwater is contained within the site proper. It doesn't have to comply with Phase II stormwater regs. It's a unique site that way.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it's appropriately addressed here, but it will be addressed as we progress in the details, as we move the project forward, right? As we discuss...
The sanitary sewer or the infiltration?
Yeah, and where it belongs on here.
Oh, yeah, I mean, right now, we don't have any indication that the town's wastewater or, yeah, sanitary sewer collection system does not have the capacity to accommodate this. We believe in our analysis that the system can support the projected flows here from this restaurant.
Was it maybe because the hotel was over on the other side?
Yes, so the wastewater, yep, the wastewater, sanitary sewer from the hotel discharges to a pump station where this project would not discharge.
Okay.
Yep.
I got it.
Okay, so with that, we do also have a draft Part III and even a draft resolution if you want to consider that tonight.
Sure. Ready to move forward with it?
I am.
Before you read the resolution, I just, I had read it before we started, and I just wanted to clarify the size of the proposed building is 5,397.
Five, three, nine, seven. Okay.
Having said that, then we'll proceed with Part III first to approve that. I think that's the next step.
Yep. Yeah, Part III just basically goes through, identifies that the Town of Victor Planning Board, you've evaluated the project and the long EAF using that criteria for determining significance and identified in SEACER regulations and...
It shows it's an unlisted action and completed Parts I, II, and III.
Correct.
Yep. And I will sign this. There's that. So then this resolution first and then that one. So then I have a resolution for Chick-fil-A dated today, application number 6-SP2025. Whereas on or about February 19th, 2025, the Secretary of the Town of Victor Planning Board received a site plan application entitled Chick-fil-A Quick Serve Restaurant and a request for modification to a declaration of restricted covenant at tax account number 006.00-1-12.1 and 006.001-1-1.5, the project proposed at 100 Eastview Mall Drive. And whereas it is intent of Chick-fil-A, the applicant to construct a 5,397 square foot quick serve restaurant with a double lane drive through an outdoor patio. This project is proposed on a 1.96 acre portion of land on the Eastview Mall parcel at the southeast corner. The project would include new asphalt parking lot containing 60 parking spaces, concrete curbing and sidewalk, utilities, stormwater infrastructure, retaining wall, and other site amenities, including but not limited to light fixtures, landscaping, signage, and associated dumpster enclosure. The 1.96 acre project is part of the larger 93.6 acre mall property and is located within the commercial zoning district Route 96251 overlay district and Eastview Mall mixed-use overlay district. And whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board, the planning board preliminarily classified the project as unlisted under state SEACER pursuant to SEACER's implementing regulations. And despite there not being a need for a coordinated SEACER review for unlisted actions, the planning board initiated the lead agency coordination process by transmitting Part One of the SEACER environmental assessment form and project information to the Town of Victor Zoning Board of Appeals, the ZBA, the only other involved agency due to the need for certain area variances. And whereas the ZBA consented to the planning board serving as lead agency, whereas with the assistance of its consultants, including the consulting engineer, Labella Associates, the town attorney, as well as town staff, the planning board has carefully examined the full EAF, the application, all materials accompanying the application, and all other materials related thereto, including information and comments offered at its meetings. And whereas at the request of the planning board, the town's consulting engineer, Labella Associates, has prepared Part Two of the SEAF as well as Part Three of the SEAF for the planning board's consideration. Now therefore be resolved that in accordance with the SEACER regulations, the planning board hereby affirms its status as lead agency and affirms classification of the project as an unlisted action. And be it further resolved, the planning board as lead agency has reviewed and considered Part One of the full EAF, application materials, public comments, and environmental record concerning the project, and has carefully reviewed and considered Part Two of the full EAF, and finds that although potential environmental impacts were identified, none of the impacts were found to be significant. And be it further resolved that in using the criteria for determining significance identified in 6-NY-CRR, Section 618.7C1, in accordance with 6-NY-CRR, Section 617.7C2 and 3, the planning board finds that the application and related project will not cause significant adverse environmental impact that would otherwise necessitate the preparation of an environmental impact statement. And the planning board hereby issues a negative declaration of environmental significance. And be it further resolved that the planning board's adoption of the negative declaration has been prepared in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York and implemented under 6 New York Code of, oh, NY-CRR, Part 617. And be it further resolved that notice of this resolution and the notice of negative declaration shall be filed to the extent required by the applicable regulations under SEACER and/or any other relevant statute or regulation. And be it further resolved that the Chair of the Planning Board be and hereby is authorized to execute further documents that may be required to complete the issuance of the negative declaration authorized herein. Comments?
I got a couple edits for you. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six paragraph down, the resolution drafted says SEAF. That should actually be F as in Frank.
F-E-A-F, okay.
Instead of Sally. Yep, that, and then the only other one is in one, two, three, third paragraph down, third line, rather than saying, and despite there not being a need for coordinated SEACER review, let's have it say, and despite there not being a requirement for a coordinated SEACER review. Substitute the word requirement for need.
Very good. So then, having said that, I need a motion to accept the amended...
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. And then finally, we've got a resolution approving execution of a second amended declaration of restricted covenant with Eastview Mall LLC. Ready? Okay. Whereas Eastview Mall LLC property owner is the owner of Lot 6 of the Eastview clustered subdivision as shown on maps numbers 21435A and 21435B filed in the Ontario County Clerk's Office, covering approximately 90.56 plus or minus acres known as tax account numbers 006.00-1-12-1 and 006.001-1-1-1-5, as more particularly described on Exhibit A attached heretofore and made part of herein after the property. And whereas by declaration of restricted covenant dated December 16th, 1997 and recorded in the Ontario County Clerk's Office in Book 991 of Deeds, page 854 para the original declaration, property owner agreed to restrict development on a portion of the property. And whereas the amended declaration of restricted covenant dated August 24th, 1998 and recorded in the Ontario County Clerk's Office in Book 1001 of Deeds, page 214 para the amended declaration, property owner revised its agreement to restrict development on a certain portion of the property. And whereas Chick-fil-A Inc., applicant, submitted a site plan application to the Town of Victor Planning Board, the planning board, to construct a quick serve restaurant on that portion of the property that is subject to the amended declaration. And whereas the property owner must further revise its agreement to restrict development on the property in order for the project to be constructed on the property. And whereas pursuant to the terms and conditions of the original declaration and the amended declaration, the planning board must approve and consent to any further modifications to the agreement to restrict development on the property. And whereas pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law, and the regulations promulgated thereto at 6-NY-CRR, Part 617, collectively referred to as SEACER, the planning board is required to undertake a review of the potential significant adverse environmental impacts associated with the project, including further modification of the amended declaration. And whereas pursuant to SEACER, the planning board, I'm going to insert board there. Planning board reviewed and prepared Parts I, II, and III of a full environmental assessment form, FEAF, for the project, gave 30 days written notice to all involved agency of the planning board's intent to act as lead agency for purposes of completing a coordinated SEACER review of the project, and did not receive any objections to the planning board acting as lead agency. And whereas on September 23rd, 2025, the planning board, after a thorough review and due consideration of the completed FEAF for the project and in consideration of other pertinent information, issued a negative declaration pursuant to SEACER for the project determining that it did not present a potential significant adverse environmental impact. And whereas the declarant, the planning board, and the Town of Victor have agreed that the area affected by the amended declaration should be further modified. And whereas property owner offers and agrees to restrict development on the quote "hatched" portion of the property as shown on the detail map prepared by BME Associates dated August 21st, 2025, project number 8836M as in Mary, and described in a meets and bounds description, both of which accompany the second amended declaration which is attached heretofore and made part of this resolution as Exhibit A. Now therefore be resolved that first, the planning board adopts each of the matters set forth in the whereas clause as herein as part of this resolution, and each shall have the same force and effect as each of the other findings made in this resolution. Second, subject to the final review and approval of the Town of Victor Planning Department and the town attorney, the planning board consents to the revisions to the property owner's agreement to restrict development on the property pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in the second amended declaration, including but not limited to Exhibit A. Third, the planning board authorizes the Town of Victor Planning Department, the Town of Victor Town Clerk, and the town attorney to undertake all necessary steps to arrange for the party's execution of the second amended declaration and its filing and recording in Ontario County Clerk's Office. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Any other edits or comments? Motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, three, zero.
Great, thank you so much. We are headed back to the ZBA on October 6th, and then hopefully we'll be back in front of this board to finalize everything.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I need a drink. I wasn't talking about water. Okay. And finally, folks, oh, we got two more?
Yeah, Galas, Galas?
Yeah, and everything. Oh, High Point, okay, thank you. So, we're up, folks. Next slide, I'm on the agenda, I'm not sure how to pronounce your name, Galas?
G-A-L-A-S, that's the homeowner. I'm Nicole Reddington with Josh Landscape Company.
So we're looking at the Galas in-ground pool, 27 SP2025 for property located at 7885 Hidden Oaks. The applicant is requesting approval to install a 15 by 35-foot gonite in-ground swimming pool.
Correct, yes. So this is a young couple. They've been in the house about three years. They've renovated the inside, you know, they've got a couple of young kids, and now they're looking to renovate the outside and kind of make it their dream home, forever home. So we were contracted to design out a pool and pool surround for them, which we've done. Because of the challenging site, it is all sloping from, you know, basically from east to west or from west to east. Where the challenge was to kind of deal with that slope and get a pool in there. So we turned to gonite because you can use some of the retaining walls, you know, some of the retaining walls can be the pool wall. We kept in mind the size and tried to keep things, you know, pretty modest so that we're not, you know, we can still do it without creating greater than three-on-one slopes and, you know, walls that aren't crazy, and then trying to maintain as much planting around it as possible to keep the slope stabilized once it is installed and minimize the hardscape that we did around the pool. So we ended up with the plan that you see up there. Like I said, it's a modest amount of paving. The wall at the, that's the west side of the pool facing the house there, doubles as a retaining wall, and it's a pool wall. That wall is four feet, and I did see a comment from the engineer that there were eight-foot walls, and I'm a little confused as to where there, you know, where it looks like we had eight-foot walls because the highest wall is the four-foot and we'd be willing to try and work with the grades to make that lower if it helped. But, you know, before we get into like the minutia of those comments, I guess I can go through the, address the comments that were made from the board, and then I also can...
Are you referring to the ones from Labella?
So that, first, there were the comments from the town engineer, so I can talk to those first, and then we can go through Labella's comments. So the first comment from the town was about the wall and that we, engineer drawing was required with a stamp. So we are, we have contracted a PE to work on those. Unfortunately, they were not able to meet this deadline of tonight, otherwise we would have loved to have those all with us, but they're close to being done, and so we anticipate that we'll be able to follow up with those in the next day or two. The second comment was about disposal and, you know, because it's a significant amount of cut that we're doing there, it's roughly 115 cubic yards of cut that will be excavated for the purpose of installing the pool. And so our plan for that is we have a dump site in Canadega that we would be bringing that fill to. Where? Sorry? Yeah, oh, is it technically Bloomfield? Okay, yeah, on County Road, what is that? Yeah, 37. So all the fill that wouldn't be used on-site would be removed off-site and taken to our fill site. And then the other comment in number two there was about adversely affecting the neighbors, which we absolutely would not direct any water towards the neighbor. And there is a decent woodland buffer between the two neighbors, and we don't anticipate going into that buffer whatsoever, leaving that intact. It was requested that we have a stamped engineer grading plan, and that is in progress, as I mentioned.
And will they be required to put written responses or will the code, and a code will come out to verify everything?
Yeah, I think you were saying you were going to have revised plans
Yep.
for code and town engineer, so we don't have a resolution tonight.
Okay.
Yep. And then same thing, erosion control plan by a licensed professional, so we are having that worked on as well. Location of existing leach fields, we will locate the... Location of existing leach fields, we will locate those, and we will locate the pop-up drain. It was suggested that we don't want to see the pop-up drain of all, any of the drainage going towards the leach field, so our plan with that would to be extend it further out than we anticipated past the leach field towards the wooded buffer. So, that was all from the towns' comments, and then as far as Lobella, I think. We're classified too, so that's complete. The site plan is in progress by a licensed engineer. They asked about the removal of the material as well, and it's approximately a hundred and fifteen cubic yards, we'll be taking it to our fill site on County Road One. The septic system will be denoted on the site plan, comment five. The drainage daylights toward the direction of leach field, so some of these are a little repetitive, but same comment, we will redirect the water further out towards, past the leach field. The wall detail is being worked on currently by a licensed engineer. We did have a question now, if I can ask that now, if it's, if we keep it under four feet, do you still require that we have a stamped...
PE stamp?
Yeah. I mean, we're doing it, but if it keeps things a little simpler...
I think, I think it would be, I think it would be more, I think the planning board would feel better if it were stamped by a PE.
Okay, no problem. So, like I said, that's in progress. The wall drainage, they were asking where that was to be directed. We will direct all the drainage, normally what we do is tie our drainage together, whether it's from the wall, the pool, the, you know, retaining walls up on the slope, we tie those together and daylight them down slope. The pool drain discharge, same thing. The location of the pool drain, can you speak to that? This is Josh Schmider, he's the owner of Josh Landscape.
So, on the, if you could go to the plan view drawing instead of the 3D, I can just point to where the...
Pool drain?
Yeah, there you go, perfect. So, the pool drain, the pool equipment is over here, it's not, it's listed on the other view, but the pool equipment will be here, and so the leach field is right along the side of the house right here. And so, what, all of the slope currently migrates this way into the wooded area here anyway, so we're just going to keep any of the water that we capture from the patio and any of the walls migrating to the exact same spot, but we'll put the pop-up drain beyond the leach field here, we'll put it into the wooded edge here where all the water ends up anyway, and we'll take the pool water from the pool equipment here, and we'll just plumb a line into that same pop-up into, it's probably several acres of woodland right here that just naturally runs to the edge of the road or the storm sewers anyway. So, we figured we would just take the pool equipment and the discharge and run it all to the same area where the drainage tile would already be running. So, any questions on that or concerns?
Do you want a different plan brought up? Was there a different one?
It's just, I think one of the plans just shows the pool equipment.
The grading plan.
Yeah, I think it shows the pool equipment right there. So, as long as, if you guys want to see it, that's fine.
It looks like this.
That one?
Oh, yeah. That's the...
There you go. So, we just noted the pool equipment is right here, you can see that notation of just the official plan of where the pool equipment would go, and that would be screened by just planting screening to hide that. There is no line of sight from any of the houses on any of the different sides, and you can't see any of the houses, there's a house that sits way off over in here, like be off the screen, it's probably four hundred yards away through the woods, and then the only other house, I mean, there's houses up the road, but it's way up over the hill off the design here, and you can't even see it, it's way up on top of the hill. So, there's really no impact to the pool equipment or location of, you know, the neighbors or impact of line of sight, so.
And that neighbor has given, you know, their blessing towards the project. I believe there was a letter from that neighbor submitted, if not, we will submit it.
Actually, on this plan here, the pool would be going right here behind the house, and the leach field is right to the edge of the house right here, and we would be running all of our drainage into this woodland buffer here, which is all sloping, so all this migrates down the hillside anyway into the woodland area. So, it's, we're trying to keep the natural flow of everything to where it's already ending up.
And then there was a question about the pool drain, where the pool drain and the filter will be located on the plan? That was a question by Lobella.
Pool drain, I'm not sure, do they mean discharge or...
Yeah, the discharge, yep.
Okay, so that's what we were just...
So, that's kind of what I already addressed, which, and we can note that on the plan, it would just discharge into that woodland area.
That's helpful, thanks.
Could you expand on that drawing when you resubmit to us and show us where the leach field is relative to all that activity, so we have something on record to show the leach field and your proposed drain system? I agree with what you're saying, but I'd like to see it graphically.
Sure.
And the other comments, Scott?
No.
How about you, Al?
It looks, certainly it'd be like a very nice project, I mean, my only concern would be more structural in nature, the integrity of that hill, I mean, make sure that that's properly engineered and sustained during the construction period, otherwise that nicely renovated house could be a wall of mud hitting it, so.
I get a sense that both the code and Lobella comments, our responses are in process already, and we will see the fruit of that on the, on the plans, and our comfort level should be increased by having it stamped by a PE, right? Is that good characterization, do you think, Wes?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, I think we'd feel more confident about that. And one of our, one of our comments, number eleven, in our letter dated September sixteenth, they're proposing some boulders in the landscape, it's unknown whether the proposed boulders will be sufficient to hold back existing slope, my guess is that you're certainly intending that to be the case, and we were suggesting that the applicant consult with a geotechnical engineer to evaluate the soils and proposed boulders and provide a geotechnical engineer's analysis to the planning board that helps support the proposal, helping the planning board feel comfortable with the, with the design. And I wanted to also ask if, Suzie, could you maybe show my screen? I've got the eleven-by-seventeen topographic map that I, we put together with GIS, and it shows, I guess it's kind of hard to see, but you can, you can sort of see the shaded contours there, I can zoom in a bit, there's quite a bit of...
That's my concern, is that hill goes up another thirty or forty feet, I think?
Yeah, so, for example, this darker orange contour is six-oh-five, and we go all the way up to contour six-fifty way up here, so you got six-ten, six-ten, so you got thirty, forty feet of elevation change, it appears above, you know, about where this pool is going to go. And, yeah, that's, I guess, I guess that's the concern, we want to be sure that, and that's the purpose of the Limited Development District and why this comes to, this sort of project comes to the planning board, right? We're looking at a pool, we don't necessarily see pools in other parts of the town, but because this is the Limited Development District, the undulating topography, that would be helpful. And I don't know, have you thought about that comment, about whether to talk to a geotechnical engineer and...
Uh, no, I mean, we've, we do these walls consistently a lot and have not had a problem with them, we do drainage to manage the hydrostatic pressure, we do washstone behind them, and then we also will use GeoGrid fabric to tie back into the slope, so...
Yeah.
We're pretty confident that...
My suggestion might be if they're getting a PE involved in doing the retaining walls, perhaps the PE could take a look at this component of the project too.
Sure.
I know that I do that, and I find boulder walls are challenging because there's really, they don't, they don't, they have irregular geometry, let's put it that way, so it's harder to analyze boulders, but I guess, I guess my sense is relative to the scope and scale of the project, that if they have a PE who's coming in to do the retaining walls, we're actually going to have him look at the boulders and the soils as well.
Could I speak to that real quick, just on the boulder comment? So, I don't know if we have photos of the backyard, was there any in the...
We do, yep.
If it'd be possible.
Can I have him bring up the photos?
If it's in there, just because I want to point out kind of how the lay of the land is.
And just to note, the boulder walls are no greater than two feet.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're not four-foot walls.
Suzie, I'm all set. They're looking to see if you have a picture, a graphic of some of the photos?
I think we have some actual site photos in there.
Yeah.
If the boulder walls are only two foot high, then I don't think you have an issue.
Yeah, if, I guess it's hard to see small photos like that, looking for one.
Can you go back to the other one? Right, on the top?
It's hard, it's hard to see. If you don't mind, I'm sorry, pull up the design, the 3D design, it just might be easier to make the point on that. If you can see the photos later, you can kind of zoom in, go to the 3D.
The back one?
Yeah, right there. So, when, when you're in the backyard, currently there is an existing four-foot wall that runs through here already, so we're really not changing anything when it comes to the backyard topography. Right now, this slope gently slopes up, and there's a wood line, a wood line right along this edge right here, we're not going into that hillside, and we're not affecting those trees. So, when we build this wall and we put these, this small wall right along the edge of the pool here, this is essentially almost flat above this because we meet the grade at the wood line, root flares of the trees at the wood line. All this boulder wall is essentially doing is one single course, just because currently it slopes and grass kind of maintains it, so all we're doing is to keep any kind of mulch or, because we're going to put kind of a planting buffer at the base of the trees that are currently existing, so we're not going to lift that elevation or lower that elevation currently higher or lower than what it already is. The boulder wall is almost acting as like a garden edge just to keep any mulch and debris eroding. So, it's not a multi-tiered boulder wall, or it's a single-course eighteen-to-twenty-four-inch boulder wall, and no disrespect to the request on the geoengineer, which is perfectly fine if that's what's required, but I think it's excessive given that the nature that we're at grade of the current trees and we're not even touching that slope. So, the thirty or forty feet that goes up the hill is all undisturbed natural vegetation, and we're, basically that grade comes down and we meet almost flush to it. I don't know if that's...
Did you ever go and pull the bottom tomato out of a stack of tomatoes and...
Yeah.
I mean, that's honest, I just want to make sure that there's structural integrity.
That's what can happen, because every time you dig into the hill, you go up two more feet, we'll add two more feet, and then you dig into the hill, you go up two more feet. So, I get the effect of going up hillside, we do a lot of structural retaining walls on the lakes, twenty years of twenty-foot-tall walls on the lakes and hillsides, and so we're very familiar with structural retaining walls. I feel better about getting it engineered, so I have no issue, because now it allows us to go back to the client, so you have to pay for this.
This is a project in the town a couple of years ago that was a complete catastrophe that came back in here for remediation.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. Yeah, we have total confidence in these, the single-course boulder wall, the elevations all work, which if the town inspector, anybody wants to go on-site and just see how that will meet up flush, and that this boulder wall, we could get away without it, I just like to have it there for slight erosion of mulch and things like that, so.
I appreciate the explanation.
Hopefully that makes sense.
So, there's the boulders, and then to depict the limit of disturbance, which we'll have on the stamp plans.
Great.
Anything else? That's it for Lobella, yeah.
Good.
Pretty good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
What's the next steps, what do we...
Oh, go ahead, Wes. No, no, you go.
So, one of the things that Lobella would like to see, at least, is written responses to our comments, and probably written responses, I think the town would probably like to see written responses to the code enforcement comments as well, right?
Yes.
And then submission of your updated plan set, right? I really like your plan set, it's just, yeah, we need to have it stamped by a PE, or have the PE create the plan and stamp it. And then, once we receive your updates and responses to comments, I'll update my comments, and we'll be back here in front of the planning board again at a subsequent meeting, and, you know, hopefully all the comments are addressed, and then the planning board at some point can move forward.
Yep, and if you think you can turn it around quickly, I can put you on the next meeting, but if not, we can keep moving you till you're ready.
What's the next, is that a month, or is it...
Two weeks, yeah. So, if you're not ready, we'll make sure we're ready.
Because the engineer was supposed to have...
Yeah. And we can communicate, so if you do need more time, we can keep bumping you, we don't have to wait five weeks, a month, or anything.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, so the final agenda item here is referral from the Town Board on Plan Development District for the High Point Business Park PDD amendment. So, we have a property on High Point Drive, it's owned as a PDD. Commercial Street Partners are proposing to amend the PDD to allow for seventy-one townhouse units, one four-story apartment building with a hundred units within Section two-dash-four. Section one will remain as two, two, as two three-story apartment buildings with forty-two units in each. The total number of units proposed is three, two-hundred-and-fifty-five units in a clubhouse. The previously approved PDD included fourteen three-story apartment buildings consisting of two-hundred-and-ninety-four total residential units, including a clubhouse with pool. The reduction of thirty-nine units is proposed with this modification. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Peter Vires with BME Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of Commercial Street Partners. So, as you mentioned, we're here this evening as this application has been referred to the planning board as required under the Town Code's PDD ordinance. We have submitted an application to the Town Board to modify the current PDD for the High Point Business Park, specifically the portion of that PDD that was established in two thousand and five, which, which was for what became the Woods at Valantown. This fifty-nine-acre parcel was originally called the HOA Lot in the original High Point PDD, but as I mentioned subsequently, was revised to become the Woods at Valantown. As you mentioned, it was approved in two thousand and eighteen for two-hundred-and-ninety-four apartment units on the fifty-six-point-eight-seven acres. It was going to be in fourteen buildings, all being three stories in height. That amendment in two thousand and eighteen also included a review and affirmation of the two thousand and five SEAKER determination and findings that were completed by the Town Board, and also at that time, this board also did their due diligence and duty as required and went through the eleven criteria as it related to the amendment at that time. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Woods received final site plan approval for Phase One, which was to be four twenty-one-unit apartment buildings. That revised it to two, forty-two-unit three-story apartment buildings, as you see on the plan up here, this being Section One here. That received final site plan approval from the planning board, it subsequently has expired, so part of this application process, when the time is right, is we'll be looking for a reapproval of Section One, as there is no proposed change to the Section One layout. The modification to the amendment that's before the Town Board is, consists of two primary components. First of all, is the introduction of seventy-one for-sale fee simple two-story townhomes. These townhomes would replace three-story apartment buildings that were proposed in both of these locations. This is Section Two, that is Section Four. It's a nuance of the Town Code, but the amendment also has to allow for single-family residential as a use within the High Point Business Park PDD, because Victor Town Code defines a fee simple townhome as a single-family residence. So, it is the nuance of the code, but we have to be sure that the PDD allows single-family residential so that the townhomes could be developed. The second component is, is in Phase Three, which originally was proposed for three, three-story apartment buildings. We are proposing a single building now that would be four stories in height and contain one hundred apartment units. As you mentioned, this, this amendment reduces the total number of residential units proposed in the Woods at Valantown, was approved in two thousand and eighteen for two-hundred-and-ninety-four units, this is now proposing two-hundred-and-fifty-five units, so there's a reduction of thirty-nine units with this amendment, and it is so that they can introduce the for-sale townhome component and then combine the remaining apartments in a single building. So, the modification does also have to, being requested is to allow for a four-story structure for that apartment... for that apartment building. This has been sited, though, at the lowest elevation with, quote unquote, "at the top of the, of the hill", so that basically we're taking that additional story that we're requesting, going from three stories to four stories, but actually setting it down. We're not adding it to the top. And we provided cross-sections on that to illustrate this. And the best way I can do that, to walk this through, is the four-story building is set at a finished grade elevation of 800, plus or minus. The original three-story buildings in Section 3 were set at a finished grade of 820. The three-story building has a height of 48 feet, so that would have put the top of the roof at around elevation 868. The four-story building has a finished grade, as I mentioned, as 800 feet, and will have a height of 64 feet. So it will actually be at an elevation of 864. So it's lower than the three-story building would have been. And also, as shown on this cross-section, this is the proposed two-story townhome in Section 4, at that western edge. That two-story townhome roof is still higher than the roof of the four-story townhome, or the four-story apartment building proposed. But also, this is a two-story element. This was approved originally, or the current approval allows that to be three stories. So we've reduced, at the top of the hills, the structures from three to two stories, and we've taken some of that density and put it in this four-story structure, but set it at a lower elevation such that really there is no change as it relates to what the elevation presentation would be to the surrounding properties. So, so our request is to initiate, we are here to initiate the amendment process. The application that we submitted to the Town Board did include a review of the seeker 2005 findings. We followed the same format we did in 2018, which is we went through the finding statement of 2005, compared those findings of fact to what the proposal was in 2018. We did the same thing as it relates to this proposal. The point being is to illustrate that with this modification, there is no additional impacts being generated that weren't already considered, analyzed, and studied in 2005, 2018, and reaffirmed in 2022. So we're being consistent with all of the original seeker proceedings as it relates to the environmental review. This reduction in density utilizes pretty much the same development area that was prepared, as we may all or may not be familiar with. The construction of High Point Drive to get up to the top of the hill, that established all of the building pad areas for the Woods at Valantown. There's some minor changes from the 2022 plan as it relates to clearing. A couple more acres of clearing will, will occur with this plan, but we're still well over the minimums required within the district. As I mentioned, one of the things the planning board has to do per Section 21127D of the code is there's 11 criteria for a new PDD application. Again, this is an amendment to the existing PDD, such that the majority of that criteria has been addressed previously, but I do think it's a function of form for this board to just reaffirm the previous work we've done. So as I mentioned, this development proposal is consistent with the 2018 preliminary development plan that this board approved at that time. And as such, if this board completes their review of that 11 criteria, and, and then we can move back forward with approving the preliminary development plan, we would go back to the Town Board to complete the amendment process, and then ultimately come back here to conduct the site plan review and approval process. So with that, I could answer any questions that you may have.
If, if I recall, several years ago, there, there was a potential issue with the view shed of this private property here, up into this area. Are the changes proposed there going to have an impact on, on the view shed from that property?
I would say in a positive sense, in the fact that the footprint of, or the development area where these units are proposed are within the same area that the 2018 plan did, except now these will be all two-story townhomes versus three-story apartment buildings. So there's a reduction of a story.
I wanted to affirm that. I thought that was the case. Thank you.
I'm not sure that I have anything. I'm trying to remember what we had last time they were in. I'm trying to differentiate between this proposal and that proposal. I guess the one question that I have, and maybe this will come out a little later, is, is there a way to just, with respect to view shed? Is there a way to look, I appreciate the cross-section, but with respect to a view shed or a view simulation, kind of like what I think we had you guys do for the hotel at Eastview? Could you give us some information on that at some point in time in the process?
Yes, we can, Scott, because I can tell you, the Town Board has asked for that also.
Okay.
Okay? And the reality of it is, we need the leaves to drop, so we can get good photos for that. One thing I, too, I did want to mention, we did meet with Bob Graham this morning, the fire marshal. That was also a request from the Town Board because of the proposed four-story building. And he will put it in writing back to the Town Board, but he has no issue with the four-story structure with the layout. He's satisfied with the fire truck access, turnarounds. The buildings will all be sprinkled, including the townhomes will be sprinkled also. So he is, he has no concerns with the four-story structure being proposed here.
Al, do you have any?
So not really a question, but a comment, just on the proposed four-story building. I just noticed that the architectural renderings of, or elevation views of the other structures kind of more stone and stucco. This appears to be more siding and brick. I don't know if there's a way to kind of tie in the elevation, particularly now that it's more of a massive building to.
I can't, you know, I can't. So as I would say, is just to put that in the comments back, so that way the applicant can respond.
But I appreciate the reduction in density, for sure, and the fact that we're staying, you know, at or below the previous, you know, building top elevations is a good point.
I seem to recall when, when this all went in, there was a balloon test of sorts for the main building. I still remember that.
Yep.
And, and I guess that's what prompts my question about the view shed.
And Wes, I think over to you. You usually have something to say.
Well, I don't have a whole lot to say. I don't have a draft of the 11 criteria prepared for this evening, but I do, I do have in front of me something that the planning board has, has considered in the past. And the findings from the 2005, so when this, when this was brought to the planning board in 2017, a lot of the findings from the 2005 recommendation remained the same, even in 2017. And there were maybe, let's see, one, two, three, four of the 11 criteria where maybe your recommendation was updated based on the new information that was provided. So, for example, what I have, and it'd be interested to see if, if Peter has the same, the same notes. But I have, like, criteria number three, the extent to which the plan departs from the zoning regulations formally applicable to the property in question. That was one that changed. Number four, the existing character of the neighborhood and the relationship beneficial or adverse to the proposed development to this neighborhood. Number eight, the amount of traffic generated at peak hours and provisions for adequately handling such volumes, with particular reference to points of ingress and egress. And number nine, the provision for storm sanitary solid waste disposal and other utilities on the property adjacent to the, to the site, as well as the site itself. Otherwise, what I'm, what I'm seeing in my notes is that all of the other criteria, the recommendation, remain the same.
And with the reduction in density, some of those concerns might be alleviated to a degree, right?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe to a small degree. So I don't think that, you know, this is necessarily a heavy lift from the planning board to be able to, you know, move forward on, on recommendation for the 11 criteria.
I agree.
And if you have, but if you have any initial thoughts, you know, I'm happy to, to bring up the, the Town Code on the, on the big screen, right? And take a look, a quick glance at those 11 criteria.
Four stories are not an issue?
Well, that's, given the nature of the PDD, that's, I guess the, the Town Board has the ability to, you know, have flexibility and allow those four stories.
I have no concerns with that. I'm more concerned with the code.
I mean, particularly in conjunction with the reduced density.
Okay. And the fact that it's sited in a lower elevation area of the site. And, and, and I think this also brings up a similar thought that I had when we were looking at the PDD across from the Drumlins. I forget the name of it now, the one with all the fill.
Blue stone.
Yeah, I think you guys, I think you guys did that.
They blend together.
Just remember the fill, that's all. You know, it's always been my interpretation that PDDs or PUDs involve different uses. And it seems like we're getting into some of these situations where the use seems to be awfully much the same. This seems to offer an alternative use to commercial or what you have up there. This, this seems to be much closer to what I understand the PDD to be.
And then remember, though, too, this lot was part, it's, it's actually in the code as the High Point Business PDD. So all of the office buildings and the retail, this was just, as I said, was called the HOA Lot. So we're, so by code, because it is a PDD, any modification, and then they've gone, you know, back and forth a few times on the type of residential use they want.
Yeah, it seems to me that we're achieving what I think is the purpose of it, which is a mixed use, where the parties are working off one another with a certain synergy versus a singular approach to something, which I think we've seen maybe too often, in my opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah.
So. Next steps?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the next step would be for us to prepare that resolution with the 11, with your findings on the 11 criteria, and for you guys to be able to take action on that at the, at the next meeting to make a recommendation back to the Town Board.
I think that works. I think that works.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
When's the next planning board meeting?
15th of October.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 15th.
Lisa, be on the lookout for me Tuesday night.
I will. After that, it's a Thursday, so.
He gets here early almost, once they meet.
Peter, does this jive with your schedule? Is, what, what were you anticipating for moving forward from the planning board?
This exact schedule you just laid out. So, yeah, this works, and, you know, 15th, if that completes, then that puts us back to the Town Board in November. And I actually had a brief discussion with the supervisor this morning about that. I don't know if we would be ready for the second Town Board meeting in October or not, but, you know, he pointed out, they, they only meet once in November, but we'll be ready for that also. And then that'll allow us, after the first of the year, we'll be back before this board for the site plan review component.
All right.
Yep, so that works for us.
All right.
Okay? Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Any other business, folks?
No, I'll move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.